You ready? Okay, Brazos County Commissioners will meet in workshop session October the 24th. It is 10:51, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, this week 106. And Chuck is joining us on Zoom. First item is the call to order and the second is presentation and discussion on election integrity by Dr. Walter Daugherty. Dr. Daugherty is a computer consultant and also a senior lecturer emeritus in the Department of Computer Science Engineering at Texas A&amp;M University. He graduated from Oklahoma Christian University with a degree in mathematics and then earned a master's and doctor's degree from Harvard University, which he attended on a prize fellowship from the National Science Foundation. As a computer expert, he has consulted for major national and international firms and for the government agencies, including classified work. He helped develop the National Computer Keyboard Standard and invented integrated user training within the computer applications as well as various electronic computer interfaces. As a computer science and engineering teacher and researcher, he has published 26 research articles from over 2.8 million in funded research projects, plus conference papers and other publications. He's taught many areas of computer science and engineering for 37 years, 32 at Texas A&amp;M University, including artificial intelligence, quantum computing, programming and software design and cyber ethics. At Harvard, he received the Bolden Prize Medal for writing and in 2015 was named a distinguished alumnus of Oklahoma Christian University. He is a life member of the Association of Computing Machinery and American, M-E-N-S-A. Dr. Daugherty, welcome. And I know you've been on, I don't remember, Fox. You've been on TV fairly often in this election issues we've had and welcome to come forward to the Commissioners Court and give us a presentation about what you've seen and, you know, see if we can open eyes here.
Thank you so much, Judge Peters, Commissioner Aldrich, Commissioner Berry, Commissioner Condala, Commissioner Watson, and thank to all of you for coming as well. This is really timely, as Commissioner Berry said, since early voting started yesterday. So we're right in the middle of another election. All elections are important for different reasons, but what I would like to focus on today is steps that we can take to improve our elections. So there's no perfect system because there are people involved. When we find problems, we look for ways to do it better. When we find people that aren't doing their job, we look for people to do it better. So that's the focus of this talk. If you are interested in the technical research that I've done, I'll give you some references to that. I have posted some of them on my Telegram channel. I've been an expert witness in court cases in about 10 states. We just recently won a case in Nevada County, California, where the citizens who had requested election records, the cast vote records, the audit logs, the tabulator logs were denied and were forced to sue the county, Nevada County, and not only won the lawsuit that citizens do have a right to see public records, but they also were awarded $85,000 in attorney's fees. Now, that's kind of bittersweet because the taxpayers are paying for it either way, since they were paying for the county to defend themselves against the citizens suing the county. But there is progress being made. So what is the background nationally and then Texas and then locally about our elections and about why we need to take steps to improve them? So I would argue that elections are our bedrock, that without honest elections, which our citizens believe are honest, we don't have a country. And that just applies to everything. So if you are hiring a cashier for your business, if the person isn't honest, you don't want to hire them. But even if the person is honest, if you don't trust them, you're not going to hire them. So it's a two-pronged thing. We need to have elections that are honest and we need people to have faith in those elections, that they are trustworthy and that they deserve to be respected as honest results. So, do we have honest elections? Since 2020, I have examined the data in about 300 counties across the country. So that's about 10% of the counties in the country. Of that, I've analyzed about 30 counties in detail, which is about 1% of the counties in the countries. So out of the 300 counties that I have looked at, 298 of them show statistical impossibilities. So that means that of that sample of elections, there are major problems. And so mathematically, so I really like to wear two hats of a mathematician and a computer scientist. I started out in mathematics as an undergraduate because back then there weren't any computer science departments. So I sometimes tell my students, I programmed my first computer in 1962 and it had 20K bytes of memory in it, not 20 megabytes or 20 gigabytes. And the students say, 1962? Dr. Daugherty, I wasn't even born then. And after a few years, and neither was my father. And if I hadn't retired, they'd probably say, and neither was my grandfather. So I was a computer pioneer and didn't realize it at the time. So here's an example of the statistical impossibilities when you look at the numbers. So the reported results from 2020 were 81 million votes for Biden, 74 million votes for Trump, 4 million votes for Joe Jorgensen, Howie Hawkins, and eligible write-ins for a total of 159.7 million votes. In presidential elections over the last 20 years, the voter turnout has fluctuated between 50 and 60 or 65%. So it goes up and down depending on how exciting the race is and the candidates. So for 20 years, the turnout has been between 50 and 65%. What's the problem? The problem is there are only 168 million registered voters in the country, and that means a 95% turnout. 95% turnout is statistically impossible. So if you're going with a range of 50 to 65%, then that means 25 or 30% of these votes are fake. In the case of the Arizona audit, I also testified to the Arizona Senate in January. And the audit that the Arizona Senate did of Maricopa County, the largest county, they found nine or 10 different kinds of ballot paper in addition to the official ballot paper. So there were many votes that were counted in that election that were on counterfeit paper.
So if you don't mind me asking a question.
Yes, please. Interrupt me at any point.
No, 95% versus our mean or median. How many standard deviations is that away?
I would have to do the calculation, but it's probably...
But you're talking like three standard deviations or more?
Probably at least, yes, probably. Yeah. So the average for 2000, this is presidential elections I'm going about, so from 2000 to 2016, the average was 53%. So that was the average turnout. And the range was roughly 50 to 65. So the mean is 53, and that means 95 is way off, way off of the mean. But I'm glad we have a mathematician on the Commissioners Court. So to put it in perspective for the rest of you, three standard deviations is making 800 on the SAT. So 500 is average, 600 is 34% above average, 800 is 99.999% above average. So yeah, I'll go back and calculate that. I'm sure I'll have other chances to present these slides and that would be worth adding.
I mean, once you get beyond two standard deviations, there's nothing there. I mean...
It's like asking how many basketball players are 12 feet tall?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So analyzing election data, I would have to say, do we have honest elections nationwide? Probably not. So the numbers do not support that and the evidence in the cases that I have been an expert witness for. So that's one prong is, do we have honest elections nationwide? Probably not. And then do people trust the elections? And Rasmussen Poll has done a poll every couple of months for the last three years on the question, how likely is it that cheating affected the outcomes of some races in last year's midterm elections? And the important point to take away from this poll is that it is not a partisan issue. So this is not something that only Republicans or only independents or only Democrats are saying, that it is either very likely, which is the leftmost bar, I apologize for those of you there in the back of the small type font, but it's hard to get everything on the screen. So the leftmost blue bar, the darkest bar, is very likely there was cheating. This is the opinion of the voters that they surveyed. The next blue bar is somewhat likely. The white is not sure. The yellow is not very likely, and the orange on the right is not at all. So the top line represents the number of all registered voters who believe it was very likely or somewhat likely that cheating affected the outcomes of some races in last year's midterm elections. Out of all voters, that's 60%. And then it's broken down by Republican, Independent, and Democrat. Not only is this a majority of registered voters who don't have confidence in the elections, these numbers have been growing every month they run the poll. So if you look at the results from two years ago, one year ago, this is the result from the poll that was run in April. So people are getting more and more concerned about the possibility of dishonest elections. Yes?
Are these registered voters or are these just general population numbers?
The, I'll give you the link. My understanding, it is registered voters, that there was a random sample and that the margin of error was plus or minus 3%.
Okay.
So if you go to X, formerly known as Twitter, and look for Rasmussen Poll, then you'll find this and their latest results. So again, as I said, this is not a partisan issue and that people of all parties are not only concerned, but becoming more concerned, particularly as more information comes out from analyzing the data. So now we're down to the question of what I'm here for today is what can we do about it to improve our elections? And so I'm going to focus on four points and then I'll throw in a couple more for good measure, the baker's dozen or la nyapa, that you get some extra for free. But these are the four points that I'd like to present to you today. And I would be very happy if the judge and commissioners would schedule additional workshops on each of these topics so that we can go into more detail about them. So what I'm giving today is my recommendations for avenues to pursue to improve our elections. More cross-checks, no internet connections, fewer computers involved, and follow the laws better. This is just common sense and best practice. So more cross-checks. Let's talk about that first. What's a cross-check? Well, the cross-check is when you check something two different ways to see if you get the same answer. So if you have a spreadsheet full of numbers, then the sum of the row totals ought to equal the sum of the column totals. If you're adding up just one column of numbers, you add it from top to bottom and then you add it from bottom to top, you ought to get the same number. Casting out nines is one type of cross-check that they used to teach back when I was in grade school. I don't know if they do anymore. The value of casting out nines is that it's quick to catch some errors. However, it won't catch all errors. So it won't catch a transposition error. So if you're balancing your checkbook and you wrote 73 instead of 37, cast out nines, you get one both ways. So that cross-check will catch some things, but not others. So what kind of cross-checks could we implement that would improve our elections? The first suggestion is after the three precinct audit count, choose another three or more precincts at random and hand-count them. So the state election procedures provide that at the end of an election, either 1% of the precincts or three precincts, whichever is larger, so in Brazos County, it's three precincts, are selected at random and checked to see that they got the same number. And so I understand that Judge Peters and Ms. Hancock are working on what it would take to implement this, to provide an additional check, to pick another three or more precincts at random and then hand-count them. So why at random? Because if someone knows what precinct you're going to check, then they'll be sure that that precinct is perfect. I did a consulting job one time for the Commerce Department about an artificial intelligence program to decide what imported goods that they should inspect. And I'll just give you a simple example. There's a container ship lands and it's got a pallet with 1,000 boxes on it. The customs inspector does not go up to the shipper and say, open the top box for me that says this is, I don't know, stuffed animal toys so I can see if there are fake Rolex watches or drugs or guns or something in it. No, the customs inspector says, break down the pallet. I want to see the middle box in the third row up from the bottom. So you don't know ahead of time which box they're going to pick. And that way you have more confidence in the result. Same way back with the Rasmussen Poll. So what do we have in Brazos County? Something like 100,000 registered voters? When you run for office and you'd like to know how you're doing, you don't make 100,000 phone calls. You make 400 phone calls at random. Because if you pick them at random, then they are highly likely to be representative of the final result. As I said, that poll I showed had a plus or minus 3%. You say, well, I want it more accurate than that. It's going to be a close race. Well, then you call 1,000 people and then you get it down to plus or minus 1.5% or whatever the number is. Or when Frito Lay is making bags of potato chips and they make 10,000 bags of potato chips, they do not inspect every single chip in every single bag. They pull, I don't know, 50 bags at random out of the batch of 10,000 and inspect every single potato chip in those 50 bags. And if they're all good, they say, the lot's good, ship it. So that's why quality control works. That's why polling works. That's, again, just common sense and best practice. If we can add another cross-check and after the official random audit of three precincts, pick another three or more precincts at random, I think that would be an excellent idea to improve confidence and I salute Judge Peters and Ms. Hancock for working to see what it would take to implement that. The second cross-check that I would like to suggest or recommend is to reconcile the official canvas, which is the totals, the election results that you will see on Channel 15 that's here with us today and the other channels as well. That's the vote totals with the official cast vote record report, which is the list of how each ballot voted. So cast vote record report is basically a spreadsheet that says the first ballot voted this way, the second ballot voted this way. And so the cross-check is if the official result says that Susie got 20 votes and John got 10 votes, then are there 20 ballots that voted for Susie in the list of all the ballots and 10 votes that voted for John? So going back to the source documents, this is just auditing 101 for all of you that are involved in business, is that you have to have physical security, separation of duties, chain of custody, back to the source documents. So that's just, again, common sense and best practice. So that's my first recommendation is to improve our elections by adding more cross-checks. Second one is no internet connections. So how would eliminating internet connections improve our elections? Well, I see a couple of technical IT people here in the audience, so they will know exactly what I mean when I say you want to eliminate attack vectors. So putting it back in the terms of protecting your house, if you don't want people coming in the windows, you put bars on the windows. So by putting bars on the windows, you have eliminated that attack vector of a burglar being able to come in into your house through the windows. So how many of you have had your identity stolen? How many of you have had your credit card number compromised? How many of you have gotten a notice from your bank that they had a security breach and it included your account? How many of you have gotten a notice from the credit reporting agencies like TransUnion and Experian that they experienced the breach that affected your credit report? How many of you have gotten a letter from, well, I won't mention the name, local hospital that said your medical records have been compromised? Almost all of those were done by the internet. So when there's that connection, and that's how my identity was stolen, is my social security number was posted online, someone filed a false income tax return in my and my wife's name on April 14th for a refund of $9,999.99 because $10,000 or more triggers a report to the Department of Treasury as a suspicious transaction. It took me two years to go through that and my social security number and my wife's and my sons are all out there somewhere compromised that can affect them the rest of their lives. So eliminating interconnections will improve the elections by simply eliminating that avenue of attack. So what connections do we have to the internet? I believe these slides will be posted with the minutes. Is that correct? Okay. Again, I apologize to those of you who are in back that the diagram is probably hard to read, but this is a generic diagram of a voting system across the country. And so on the left is the precinct polling place with a tabulator, e-poll books, probably a printer. It has a Wi-Fi hotspot which connects to the internet. And then the center box is the election management server. And then the box on the right is the Secretary of State. And then up at the top is the internet and all of the government and public-private partnerships like CIS who have connections to that through the internet. So here in Brazos County, we use the Verizon MiFi hotspots, which connect to the internet in the polling places. And my recommendation would be to eliminate that so that you eliminate that attack vector because it is susceptible, as many of you have experienced. The other thing that was in the bottom right box, let's see, I think I have a, yeah, you can see right about there, it says Albert Sensor. So the Albert Sensor is a monitoring computer, which is inside the firewall. And the purpose of it is to monitor county equipment for malware and intrusions. But because it can see all of the county computers and it is a two-way connection, so it can not only see information going out, it can send information in, that again is a potential vulnerability. And so in Lincoln County, in Washington State, they were relying on the Albert Sensor to protect the county computers by notifying them of intrusions and they got a ransomware attack, where a hacker got into the county computers, encrypted all the files and say, I won't tell you the key to get your files back unless you pay so many Bitcoin or whatever to some anonymous account. And CIS that's supposed to be monitoring this with the Albert Sensor never notified the county. And they said, well, if it's not benefiting us the way that it's supposed to, then we're going to take it out. And so that would be another recommendation to look into, to eliminate the internet connection by removing the Albert Sensor. Several counties, as I said, have already done this. So no internet connections would improve our elections. Having fewer computers involved would improve the integrity of our elections. And people are often surprised when they hear me say this. They say, well, you're a computer science professor. You must love computers, to be working with them all your life and think that computers are the answer to everything. So if you want to know how to brush your teeth better, look it up on the computer and there'll be somebody who'll tell you how to do that. Well, you all are sophisticated information consumers now to not believe everything you see on the internet. So if you look, I'm sure you can find on the internet that eating popcorn cures cancer and you can also find that eating popcorn causes cancer. So you always have to consider the source of information. But here again, for my technical audience, not only do we want to eliminate attack vectors, we want to reduce the attack surface. So the fewer computers that are involved in the process, then the harder it is for someone to manipulate them. And again, it's like the example of putting bars over your windows so that burglars won't come in the windows. So where could we reduce the number of computers? One would be to go back to paper poll books. So we used to use paper poll books. The registration for voting closes 30 days before an election. And so during that 30 days, print out the copies of the poll books so people can sign in when they come to vote. That would prevent what happened in Dallas County this last election. So if you will look for it, you can find the video of election workers who were sitting at the polling place at about 6:45 PM. So it was about 15 minutes to closing time and there was nobody in line. So everybody had gotten there on time to vote before the polls closed and the workers were just sitting there waiting for 7 o'clock so that they could close the election and start processing the results. And one of the workers happened to look up at the screen for the poll book, the electronic poll book where they check in, that said there'd been 673 voters check in, 674, 675. The numbers started going up. And there was nobody in line, there were no voters, there was no poll worker pushing the button to say, check in this voter. Somebody was checking in more voters remotely. And if you have a paper poll book, that's hard to do. Now, if you go back to the history of LBJ's elections in 1944 and 1948, I understand the last 300 signatures checking in the poll book were all the same handwriting and many of them were residents of the local cemetery. So... So, you know, there is no such thing as a cheat-proof system, but what we want is a system where it's harder to cheat and easier to catch. And one way to do that would be to have fewer computers involved in our election and then we would not see the situation that did occur in Dallas in this last election. Fourth, in addition to the first three things, one thing that I believe would improve our elections would be to follow the laws better. So the laws are complicated and they don't cover all cases, but sometimes the laws are really simple and then somehow they fall through the cracks and we don't follow them. So I'm just going to mention two laws which are part of the Texas election code that if we would follow these laws better, I think it would improve our elections. So the first one is election code 52.062 and it's a very short law, it's one sentence long. It says ballots shall be numbered consecutively beginning with the number one. So this is just like a checkbook. So when you open a checking account and you get a book of 500 checks, then every month when you reconcile your statement, you see, okay, I wrote checks one through five, I made a mistake and I voided check six and wrote check seven and I still have checks eight through 100 in my checkbook. So you keep a register and reconcile the number of checks. So the state law says that the ballots shall be numbered consecutively beginning at one. So Tarrant County does this. Exactly the procedure that I described is that they number all of the blank ballots and then they have a register that says ballots 1 to 400 went to precinct one, ballots 401 to 796 went to precinct two. And then at the end of the election, they reconcile that and say, we had this many cast ballots, this many spoiled ballots, and here they are with the word spoiled on it. You don't write void on a ballot, you write spoiled. But I guess the bank would still know not to cash it if you wrote spoiled on a check. So this many ballots were cast, this many ballots were spoiled, and this many ballots were unused and are returned. So here are the blank ballots back. And that's the way Tarrant County does it and they're following the law. And that is a good way to improve elections is to keep track of every possible ballot. Another section of the election law is election code 22.001A which lists 10 requirements of the Texas law to use a voting system. And I just want to focus on one of those 10 items. You can look up the rest of them. It says a voting system may not be used in an election unless the system complies with the voting system standards adopted by the Election Assistance Commission. So you remember, those of you who are older, the hanging chads of 2000 where the voting was by a punched card that was perforated and you were supposed to punch the chad out all the way for the one you wanted to vote for, but there were some that didn't come all the way loose. And so then when they did the recount, we had these pictures on TV of people, you know, holding up a magnifying glass and say, okay, well, candidate A was hanging half of the way out and candidate B was two-thirds of the way out. So I think they meant to vote for candidate B, but if you punch two candidates, that's an overvote and you shouldn't count this. So after that debacle in 2000, Congress passed the Help America Vote Act of 2002 which established the Election Assistance Commission in order to set standards and provide assistance for states and counties to improve their voting system to something that wouldn't be as ambiguous or inaccurate or whatever you want to call it as trying to punch out holes in pre-perforated things. So why did I put this on the list of the law that we need to follow better? Because the Election Assistance Commission says that in order to be certified as required by Texas law, the vendor has to have their equipment tested and approved by a certified testing laboratory. So stay with me now, this is a two-step process. So Texas says, Election Assistance Commission, have you approved our voting system? EAC says, vendor, have you had it tested by an approved laboratory? Laboratory, approved laboratory says, yes, we tested it and it passed. EAC says, we got the test report from the testing laboratory and it passed. And so vendor, we'll certify your system. And then Texas says, okay, we can adopt the system. The problem is that the testing laboratories do not have a valid certification. And so if you don't have an authorized signature on the certificate, then it's invalid. It's like if some friend said, hey, Walter, we're thinking of getting married, would you perform the ceremony? And I'd say, sure, I'd love to. And so I performed the ceremony and I signed the marriage license. And they go over to the courthouse and file the marriage license. Are they married? I don't think so because I'm not an authorized signature. You might be surprised to learn how easy it is to get qualified to perform marriage services. And that's one of the judicial powers that Judge Peters has. So if any of you are thinking of getting married and would like Judge Peters to officiate, he is an authorized signature for marriage license, but I'm not. Or if somebody stole Commissioner Watson's checkbook and signed her name on a check and went to cash it, when she gets her statement back, she says, what's this? And looks at the picture of the check, says, that's not my signature. She goes to the bank, they said, they look at the signature card, yep, that's not an authorized signature, here's your money back. So the testing laboratories do not have an authorized signature. So the federal regulations require that the testing laboratory certification be signed by the chairman of the commission. The two testing laboratories, so it doesn't matter which one our vendor used, neither one of them has a certificate signed by an authorized signature. So those are some laws that need to be followed better. So those are my main four points. Judge, do you want to have some questions about this? I have a little more to share with you, but this is a good point to ask.
Does anybody on the court have questions?
Yeah, just, okay, so on your last point there, how do you authorize? So that's, that check needs to be done by us? So from where I'm reading here, the Election Assistance Commission does not verify authorized signatures, who does?
You're exactly right. So in my research talks, I always start out by saying, we have to have elections that are transparent, accurate, and accountable. And so no one seems to be accountable for certificates with unauthorized signatures on them. You can file a complaint with the EAC and some people have, but I haven't heard any response from that other than to say, oh, well, maybe the testing lab wasn't certified then, but it is now. But if you go to EAC.gov, there is no testing lab certificate of accreditation with the authorized signature. So the federal regulation says the authorized signature is the chairman of the commission. And the certificates were not signed by the chairman of the commission. So maybe we need some help from our senators and US representatives. Maybe Pete Sessions will become speaker and he'll take an interest in having EAC follow the federal regulations. Excellent question.
Okay, but so that's one of those things where we really don't have any significant ability, I mean pragmatically, what do we do to correct that, I guess is the question?
Well, I mean, money talks. If you were to tell your election system vendor, we're going to cancel your contract if you don't satisfy the federal law. Then I'm sure they would be very interested in
So there is
Getting a certified, getting a laboratory certified with an authorized signature to inspect the systems that we're paying for.
So there exists an authorized lab?
There does not. There are only two labs and neither one of them has an authorized signature on their certificate of accreditation. These are posted online at EAC.gov and I can send them to you if you would like the full reference.
So I believe that when we were, when we, we've got Hart is our system and at the time we purchased that, I think ESNS and Hart were the only two that were approved by the state for counties to purchase. There was, there's another one that has allegedly had problems in other states, but the state of Texas did not approve that particular one for purchase, so it's not approved in Texas. So I'm not sure about this certification, but I think Hart and ESNS can both be used in Texas and that was by the legislature, I believe. So I'm not sure about the certification, maybe that is something that the state needs to look at, but I believe that the state says, here's the list of vendors that you can buy your system from and that's where we, then we negotiated with each to decide where we were going to get it. So I don't know whether that may have been kind of what your comment was, I'm not sure whose responsibility it is. Obviously, we have, as a county, you know, we've got, we had two choices, we've already purchased Hart, you know, we've spent the money and when we went through that whole process, it looked like Hart was, in my opinion, as it won on the court, it looked like it was the safest from what I saw. And I know we've had this discussion, but with the system we've got right now, you go to the computer and you print, you punch in who you're voting for, it prints out a ballot, and then you can look at that and see that that dot is on the correct person you voted for and then you put it in the system. And when we bought that, they said that it was optical scan resolution, you know, that it was, that that's how the computer counted that ballot was, was the dot that was put on there. And we've had the discussion also, I know there's a QR code on there, I have no idea what it is, and I guess nobody does except Hart. But if it's got optical scan resolution that's actually counting that vote, then the way you check that is kind of what we've talked about, you know, you random, after the election's over with, you pull out of a hat three other precincts and you verify that the votes that were cast by the computer is exactly what the hand count would show, that will pull those out and count those dots for a candidate. And if it verifies it, to me, that's the way you audit and check to see whether our computer system is accurate or not. And I want it, I mean, I, you know, I see what's happened around and, you know, I wondered is there something going on, you know, maybe? But the way I think we verify and keep the, I mean, we have got a fairly easy way to vote for anybody with, and I know that that's been some issues, people think we need to go back to hand count and hand ballots and precincts rather than the general
Vote centers.
Yeah. Yeah. And of course, for the people, for the convenience of vote, I think if you look back at when that was implemented, the number of people that vote has gone up. So I think it's easier for people to vote if they don't have to go back to their home precinct and actually cast a vote, you know, if you're able to go at any one that's open. So I hear what you're saying, I'm just not sure what we could do about a certification that's beyond, I think, what we have the ability to do. And if neither one of those two that the state has approved has a certification, then it should be the state that requires them to go out and get certified, not Brazos County. And I don't, I don't think that we'd be able to hold Hart to anything by saying, well, next time we won't buy anything from you because we've already spent our money with them.
Okay, transparency, accuracy, accountability, and accountability is the part that's missing. So you covered a lot of history there, let me see if I can remember some of the points. So the election vendors, voting system vendors have to apply to the Secretary of State who oversees elections in Texas. The Secretary of State is not an elected position. It's a appointee of the governor. So the Secretary of State then invites companies to apply for Texas certification. So we have EAC certification, which doesn't have the authorized signature, then they have to apply for Texas certification. And then the Secretary of State's office appoints three examiners, the Attorney General's office appoints two examiners. Those five examiners then look at the equipment and evaluate them. And your memory is correct that in the last round, which was five years ago or so, the third company that applied in Texas was Dominion and they did not pass the state examination and therefore they were not allowed to do business in Texas where Hart Inter-Civic and ESNS were. But again, my point is follow the laws better. So the law says a voting system may not be used unless it complies with this federal law and the systems that ESNS and Hart Inter-Civic submitted to Texas don't comply with the federal law. The Secretary of State did not require, they did not hold them accountable for following that law. And so since the examiners are from the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office, those are the two places that need to be holding the companies accountable for following the law. Now, you mentioned a couple of other things which are actually my last two extra points and then we can wrap this up. What else can we do about making our elections better and improving public confidence in them? One is to maintain the voter roll properly. So Harris County had 1,100 known illegal voters, 3,600 ballots that were mailed out but were not reported to the state, 9,000 voters not on the state voter roll, 64,153 deceased registered voters who are on the social security death list, 384,000 voters with national change of address discrepancies. So when you submit a form to the post office to say you're changing address, then that generates an entry in the NCOA database. So how do we make sure this doesn't happen in Brazos County? And this isn't a case of one and done, that we went through every voter on the roll and they are a US citizen, they are over 18, they're not a felon, they're not mentally incapacitated, they do reside in the county and they're alive and we got the perfect roll and then tomorrow, one of those people will move out of the county or die. Now unfortunately, some of them come back to life. So they recently arrested a ring of people in Houston that were taking names off of obituaries and submitting voter registration cards in the name of the deceased person but with their address and with their signature. So in order to vote, you have to be registered to vote. And so they were registering a bunch of dead people and then requesting a mail-in ballot so that since they were the ones who had signed the voter registration card for the dead person, they're the ones whose signature was checked on the absentee ballot. So my understanding is that every month Brazos County submits a deaths in the county report to the Bureau of Vital Statistics in Austin. So this comes from the hospitals, law enforcement, funeral homes. These will include people from other counties who may have been in the hospital in Brazos County when they passed away. But every month, we send a report to the state Bureau of Vital Statistics of deaths in the county. Is there a process for automatically removing them from the voter rolls? Is there a process for automatically removing them from the voter rolls? If not, can we establish such a process that we just knew that? And I can assure you that Social Security keeps very close track of deceased people. If there's one thing Social Security does not want to do, it is mail out a check to someone who is deceased. So when my mother-in-law passed away, the law is that if you're alive on the first day of the month, you get your check for that month. So she was alive on the first day of the month, got her check, passed away toward the end of the month, and they had already deposited February's check even though she passed away at the end of January. The next day, we got a note from the bank that said, "ACH reversal." So Social Security took that back. So as I said, we want to make sure that deceased voters are removed, that people who move out of the county are removed, that the voter registration rolls are consistent. So one of these points here, the third point right there, there were 9,000 voters on Harris County's voter roll that were not on the state voter roll. And this is what just came out in the Secretary of State's audit. So if you are interested in that, look for October 19th, Secretary of State Preliminary Findings from the Audit of the November 2022 Election in Harris County. That's where some of these figures come from, some of the other figures came from Alan Vera. And then the other thing that you mentioned about countywide voting versus precinct voting. So there are advantages and disadvantages both ways, and you correctly described some of the advantages of countywide voting, our convenience, and maybe improving voter turnout. The disadvantages, unfortunately, in some cases outweigh those advantages. And my poster child for that is Williamson County, which is just north of Austin, so Georgetown area. So in the election in Williamson County, voters did not always get the right ballot. So when you go to a voting center and check in, if you're from Precinct 17, then it should print you a ballot for Precinct 17 for you to fill out. In this case, I'll use Brazos County for an example, that if you're in Precinct 1, you should get a ballot with the candidates for Precinct 1 commissioner. So the way it was discovered is that there was a family, father, mother, and two adult children who went to vote together. And in addition to the state elections that were on the ballot, there was also the mayor's race for all of the towns in Williamson County, so Georgetown, Hutto, Liberty Hill, so on. So after they voted, the family's going back out to the car, and one of them says, "Hey, I voted for Susie for mayor of Hutto, who did you vote for?" And the other family member said, "That's funny, my ballot didn't have mayor, Susie's name wasn't on my ballot." She got the ballot for mayor of Georgetown. So after a long investigation by some citizens in Williamson County and the professor of computer science at Princeton, Andrew Appel, what they discovered was that when someone checked in to vote, so they said, "Yes, you're a registered voter and you can vote," and pushed the button on the screen to say, "Print the ballot," sometimes, nothing happened. And so what do you do when you click a screen and nothing happens? You click it again. So the poll worker clicked it again, "Print the ballot." And sure enough, a ballot came out, voter took the ballot and went to vote it, and went to vote it. But now, while nobody was paying attention, a second ballot came out of the printer. So then the next person in line checks in, and they're in Precinct 4, they're not in Precinct 1, or they're in Georgetown and not in Hutto. And the poll worker presses "Print" and goes over to the printer and picks out the top ballot, but the top ballot was a duplicate from the precinct before. And that meant unless they were from the same precinct all lined up, every ballot after that duplicate was off by one as to which precinct they got. That completely destroys auditability. So there is no way to find out after the fact that each voter got the correct ballot. And that meant that the results of that election, in the words of Professor Appel, were unknowable and unrecoverable, because there's no way to go back and make sure that people got the correct ballot.
One comment on that, Dr. Doherty. If that voter, when it prints out, when they have it, if they look at that ballot and it's not what they punched into the computer, then they would know that something happened, and they should be able to call it to their attention then. Is that not correct?
You're exactly right, but you are more meticulous than some people. So in our 2020 election, we had about 35 races on the ballot. And obviously, there was more interest in president, senator, county judge, county sheriff, judge, court of criminal appeals place three. I'm sorry to inform you, but not everybody checks 100% of their ballot. And now, when you have that situation, then as happened in Williamson County and other counties across the state, there's no way to audit it and no way to correct it. So if we could make everybody pay as much attention to their ballot as you do, to say, "Yep, that's who I voted for," "Nope, that's the wrong race," and go back and say, "Spoil this ballot and give me the right ballot." So we need to, again, improve the elections and make it harder for failures like this to occur and easier to catch.
Well, and that's where something like this, where we're making people aware of potential, maybe that will raise their awareness when they cast their ballot, that they do actually look at that ballot.
Public service announcement from Judge Peters.
Right, exactly.
Read your ballot and check it twice. You made your list and check it twice, going to find out if you voted for the naughty or the nice. Okay, final thing I will leave you with is that after several years of saying, "Well, the Democrats are really good about getting out the mail-in and early votes and absentee votes," so the Republican National Committee was saying, "We need to improve our game and do the same thing and get out more early votes." And I will have to interject here, from the research that I've done in other states, mail-in ballots seem to be the easiest place to cheat. And so there are, most major countries in Europe have banned mail-in balloting for exactly that reason, is that's the easiest place to cheat. But with the, I was going somewhere with this. Oh, yes, okay. So the Republican National Committee has for a couple of years been saying, "Well, we just need to get more people to mail in their ballots and vote early." And based on what I have seen in Maricopa County and other counties, I say, "You can't out-harvest the high-speed printer." So the ballots in Maricopa County, I mentioned the counterfeit ballots, so they use Dominion scanners, which specify 80 or 100-pound paper. So ordinary copy paper is 20 pounds or maybe 25 pounds. We're talking something that's four or five times thicker than this, it's like postcard stock. 80 or 100-pound paper made by Roland Paper Company in Canada with an embedded infrared fluorescent ghost tagent. So you've all seen these things that glow under ultraviolet light. Well, the Dominion ballots glow under infrared light, and the Dominion scanner has a detector so that when a ballot is put into the scanner, it shines an infrared light on it and looks to see if it is genuine paper or not. So that's the way the system is supposed to work. When the Arizona Senate audited all 2 million ballots from that election, they found nine or 10 different kinds of paper, most of which were from Office Max and Staples, in addition to the genuine paper with the infrared ghost tagent. You can think of it as an invisible watermark. You say, "Well, how could this happen? I mean, the machine was supposed to check and spit it out if it's not, if it's a counterfeit ballot paper." There's a setting that you can turn the detector off. So Maricopa County turned the detector off, their scanners accepted ballots from any source. And so now, after going down that rabbit hole, I'll come back to the point that I wanted to leave you with, is that after a couple of years of saying, the Republican National Committee I'm talking about now, that we just need to work harder and get more people to vote early and mail in their ballots, and I keep saying, "You can't out-harvest the high-speed printer that can generate fake ballots like we saw in Maricopa County." Now, a couple of months ago, the Republican National Committee changed their mind and passed a resolution that they, that they wanted to improve reelection in a number of ways. And then the Republican Party of Texas, October 5th, passed a resolution supporting the Republican National Committee's Resolution in Return to Excellence. And I'd just highlight two clauses out of this, and there are a couple of people who have extra copies, so as you leave, pick up a copy of this. Then, once the minutes and the slides are posted, you'll be able to see them on the county website. But the two paragraphs that I'd like to read, this is from the Texas GOP Resolution Supporting the Republican National Committee's Return to Excellence in Voting and Elections Resolution. So here it goes. "Therefore, be it resolved, the Republican Party of Texas opposes any means of voting that do not have proper safeguards in place or that are exclusively electronic, and calls on every county in the state to use ballot procedures that are fully auditable with hand-marked voter-verifiable paper ballots to ensure that every vote is memorialized by a paper record." And then toward the end, "Be it further resolved, the Republican Party of Texas calls for the creation and maintenance of precinct polling places so that voting occurs in each legal precinct or geographic unit in order to provide impartial access for all voters." So pick up a copy of this, look at the other clauses as well, and if you're so inclined, let your precinct chair of your party organization, and I have not seen a similar resolution from the Democrat Party or the Libertarian Party, but many of these principles, based on the information that I have presented to you today, are just common sense and best practice. So what we want to do is everything we can to improve our elections, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. Good presentation. And I might point out, I mean, we've talked about this being a nonpartisan issue, and it is. I think in 2000, when George W. Bush beat Al Gore, it was the Democrat Party that thought that election was stolen, and of course, when recently, more recently, when Biden beat Trump, then the Republicans thought it was stolen. But you're right, it is nonpartisan, and it depends, but we need to try to do the best we can to make sure that the elections are accurate and do it to our best of our ability to get that done.
Absolutely, and if-